This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, so welcome, everybody. August 13th council meeting, I'll call the meeting to order. Lindsay, you have a record of attendance. I actually have the deputy mayor here, just six feet away. Any declarations of conflict of interest, anyone? You can declare at the time of the agenda item. Approval of agenda additions or deletions? I'm thinking under 10A, the election signed piece, because it's legal, that we can move that in camera, if everybody's okay with that. We don't need to be putting our legal opinion out in public yet.
Is Greg with us, Greg Barrow?
Yeah, he is.
Thank you.
Okay, any additions or deletions, anyone? Okay, I'm looking for...
I'll make a motion, Your Worship, with the moving of 10A to in camera.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Approval of minutes, public hearing July 9.
So moved.
Second.
Counselor Jim, Counselor Don, any discussion?
Question.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Town council meeting July 9.
So moved.
Counselor Don?
Second.
Counselor Steve? Any discussion?
Question.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Contrary? Motion carried, thank you. Committee of the whole, July 22nd, please.
So moved. Okay.
Deputy Mayor, second by Counselor Don. Any discussion?
Question.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried, and a special town council, July 22nd.
So moved.
Okay.
Steve, there again.
I missed two, I can't tell who moved it.
Steve.
Counselor Steve? And Counselor Jim? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried, thanks, folks. Business arising, communications and meeting hardware stipend policy. Did you want to take that, CAO?
Sure thing. Thank you, Worship. So at the last meeting, we talked about the next iteration of council and how we would deliver meetings to the public and how we would manage the IT. And as we talked about in the past, for the past eight, 10 years, councillors have provided their own devices and maintained them on their own and with their own support, and we provided a stipend. And what I proposed at our last meeting was that we would provide, the town would provide computers and the IT support to councillors so that we have the consistency and we can assure that meetings such as this are able to be supported by our IT. And also, of course, the town would be responsible for the security of its devices. So council agreed to that. So what you have here is a policy that says that council, that the town will provide... Your Worship, Counselor Hood had motioned or signaled something, maybe?
Yeah. Counselor Hood, you are muted. Did you need to say something? Are you good? Can you hear us, Cliff? I can't tell if he can hear. Can you tell if he can hear us, Lindsay? Can you hear us, Wade, if he can hear us? Hey, Lindsay, you might have to call him.
He's not looking to talk, so just carry on, Jeff.
I know, but he can't, he might not be able to hear us.
Oh, I see. I understand now. I think he's swearing.
I might have to go back out, he might have to go out and come back in.
Well, this is a good example of the technical kind of issue that if we had all consistent hardware, we could have IT connected and maybe troubleshooting the problem if there was a problem.
Yeah. Is it, what's up, Lindsay?
He can't hear us or anything, and he's just frustrated. And he doesn't think he's going to participate.
But... He'll get over it, he won't quit. I know Cliff well enough, they won't quit, but did you suggest to him that he could go off and come back? He's not going to quit. You can't hear the swear words, anyway.
Jeff, just a question about the hardware and the appropriate software. It's, they don't work with Apple, they just work with another...
Yeah, so our IT provider, the Municipal Joint Services Board in Lunenburg County, they support three, maybe four other municipalities, and so they have specified a particular laptop. And so they've already ordered over 40 of them for the next council in other municipalities. And so we would receive the same device. And so from their perspective, they would have exactly the same equipment that they're deploying to each of their councils. And if there was a piece of equipment that failed or wasn't working, they could swap it out very easily, if necessary. And have one preloaded and delivered to you, ready to go.
If I was a councillor in the next term, what about all the emails that I've saved and files that I've saved? Is that possible, is that necessary?
Your mailbox would still be your mailbox, your county Yarmouth mailbox would still contain all your emails. Now, if you're saying that you have moved your emails off the server or have you just organized them on the server?
There are, or I'd like to have three separate email addresses, and one of them is the county Yarmouth. And so that they would just come over to new hardware, et cetera.
Correct.
Okay.
There are two Cliffs.
I'm back. You hear me now?
Yes. Can you hear us?
Do you hear me?
Yep.
Yeah.
I turned another computer on.
Okay, so can you hear us, Cliff?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Tell me why the other one's not working, I'll be happy.
So we're just...
As much as this one.
Jeff's just talking about the communications hardware piece. So go ahead, CAO.
Yeah, so as I was saying, council had decided at the last meeting to go ahead and have the county Yarmouth provide business laptops to council for the next term. And this policy just simply states that. And we had previously a policy that paid you an IT hardware stipend, so that is deleted from this policy now. So you would no longer receive a hardware stipend, but you would be delivered a piece of equipment that would be supported by our IT services. And you would still receive a stipend for your communications, which is $50 towards your internet service.
All right, Your Worship, I have a question.
Go ahead, Counselor Cleveland.
I'm wondering about expense. I was thinking, I was doing just some quick math in my head. We get the $500 stipend yearly. So overall, I would think that this actually would be a little bit less expensive an option, plus being a little more reliable, perhaps.
It may be a little bit...
Am I right?
Yeah, probably so.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't expect the new hardware to cost $2,000. The difference is, of course, we'll pay for it upfront. And what I like is we'll provide the IT support. So when you do have an issue, as Counselor Hood was having earlier, you know, we have someone on call that knows exactly the device he's working on and can help troubleshoot the issue. And I have to say, we've had tremendous success and employee satisfaction with the service coming from Municipal Service Board in Lunenburg. Really happy with the level of service.
Excellent.
Thank you.
So what are you looking for, CAO?
Just approval of this policy, Your Worship.
Okay.
I have a question first. Jeff, at the... At the end of the two pages is the date of adoption, October 11, 2012. And then is that date still...
That was the original date of adoption of a policy that paid a stipend to you. And so that will be updated to say amended. If it's approved tonight, it'll be amended August 13, 2020.
Thank you very much.
Your Worship, I'll make that motion if you want, that we pass this policy as presented.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
Counselor Jim? Any more discussion?
Question.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Contrary? Motion carried. Thank you. Curbing policy?
So, Your Worship, a few months ago, we started an initiative to review all of our policies and bylaws on a regular basis so that during your term as council, you will have had every policy or bylaw presented before you for your consideration for update. The curbing policy is one such policy. So essentially, what we're doing with this policy is we're saying that if a lot is developed, and we're thinking commercial lots, and think about the frontage along, say, Stars Road as an example, or Haley Road is another example. If someone develops a lot and they do a nice job of putting in curb and grass islands and defining entrances, often their property ends maybe 20 feet from the edge of the asphalt. And what we're saying by this policy is if you develop your lot and you define your entrances and you make it nice, that we will match the same level of finish from the property line out to the street itself. So there's often an area of street right-of-way that needs some attention. And to the degree that the property owner invests and beautifies the front, we will match it on the town side.
Okay.
And that's what we've been doing for quite a while. It's worked. And so we're looking for, I guess, confirmation that we want to continue with this policy.
And also, Jeff, you would amend it to today's date, would you?
Absolutely.
When property owners install, renovate, or alter their entrance way? Okay, so I have a question.
Go ahead.
When property owners do this, does this got anything to do with sidewalk? And I ask that because of the accessibility piece. Is that completely separate? Like, we need to make sure that everything we're doing from now on has the accessibility lens, we're looking through that lens.
So sidewalks are either always on our property or on property on which we have an easement. So sidewalk is always ours. What this is talking about is we require developments to define entrances. And if you go along Stars Road or Haley Road, Main Street, you'll see, you know, that entrances are defined, and sometimes they're defined differently. Sometimes they're paved, sometimes a gravel driveway. Sometimes there's asphalt curbing, sometimes concrete curbing, sometimes no curbing at all. And what we're saying in this policy is that we will match what the property owner does when they develop their property. So think in front of, you know, Yarmouth Dodge, Yarmouth Chrysler Dodge. They recently redeveloped that, and they did some improvements to the curb side, and we matched that. Think about in front of, like, Superstore or Staples, right? When they did that development, it doesn't end at the property line. We continued what they did out into the street right-of-way so that it looks better. And this is our commitment to developers that we will do that.
Gotcha. Okay. All right, so I'm looking for a motion to approve the policy.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, moved by Counselor Wade, second by Deputy Mayor. Any further discussion?
Question.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Destruction of documents by law, first reading.
Okay, so, Your Worship, this is an old bylaw, as you can see. It dates back to 1983. And there is no need to make any significant changes to this. The only thing that we've done here, and it's in red in the document, is that we've changed the he's or his to hers and she's as well, to keep it inclusive. And I've also suggested in here that we add or designate, because I'm going to tell you that every document, every single document that is slated for destruction does not necessarily get my eyes on it. And so I want the ability, as has been actually the practice, to designate, in the case of financial documents, it's the Director of Finance who reviews those documents and recommends them for destruction. And so that is the only change within this policy that we're looking for.
Okay.
And, oh, by the way, I misspoke there, it is a bylaw, so it requires two readings.
Okay, so...
What do you need from us?
Yeah.
A motion for first reading.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make that motion, Don Barry.
Moved by Counselor Don.
Second it.
Second by Counselor Steve. Any more discussion on this one?
Question.
Question.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried, thanks, folks. Tender results, Haley Road Trail.
So this, Your Worship, is some good news. Memo from DeMario Dunkley regarding the Haley Road multi-use trail. So this is the first segment of that trail that will be constructed, and it will go from Forest Street to Parade Street. And so the tender was posted at the Nova Scotia Procurement Site, July 10, 2020. The tender closed on the 23rd. We had one compliant bid received. The scope consists of the construction of an asphalt multi-use trail, complete with bedding gravels and mulch placement on the inside of the rock wall. So we had great cooperation from the Wesleyan Church to allow us to put this piece of public infrastructure on an easement on their property. That saved us the cost of infilling a ditch and putting in storm culvert, which cut down drastically what our cost would be of doing this project. And so we're very appreciative of that. It also makes it safer by separating people a little bit further away from traffic. And obviously, the rock wall is not impacted. So the bid was from Aberdeen Paving for $134,300 plus HST, and it's recommended by the project engineer that we approve.
I have a question. Is in the budget this year, or when will we start that?
We have the budget, and as soon as you approve this, it will be awarded. And it will be built this fall. And I can tell you that we're already working on the design for segment number two, which would run from Parade Street to Stars Road. Mark and I walked that segment earlier this week. There are some additional challenges in that section. Although you don't have open ditch, you do have several businesses and some public infrastructure, utility poles, and so on to work around. So a little more challenging, but, you know, price-wise, I'm very pleased with this. And once again, you know, a big thank you to the Wesleyan Church, because otherwise, this would have been a much more expensive segment.
What...
So moved, Your Worship.
What are we looking for from Argyle to Forest?
Argyle to Forest would be the next section, and that'll have to be designed as well. We felt, and there's no science to this, but we felt the first segment in front of the Wesleyan Church was important to do because that was going to be challenging. We were carrying it north to Stars Road. Then we'll come back and do the next segment, design-wise, do the next segment from Forest to Argyle. That one's going to be a little bit challenging for another reason. Not only is it open ditch, but as you travel south on Haley Road, there are several residential developments, several residential properties. We may be infilling ditch and putting in storm sewer. And we may, we obviously would be affecting what they have traditionally viewed as their street frontage. So we've done that before with success. Think about Pleasant Street and even the most recent section on Stars Road. We've had no negative repercussions when we've done this. People appreciate the infrastructure we're putting in. The other one was, sorry, Clements Avenue. We did that in front of residential properties. And I think that the residents there were a little upset initially because we were changing the front of their property, but we've had no further complaints once the infrastructure was put in.
Okay, good, and when are we starting this?
So, again, if you award this tonight, this section will get going right away. It's already designed, this would award the work. And as soon as they can mobilize, they'll start that. Yeah, Mark is working with the engineers designing the second phase. And as soon as we allocate the funds to it, that will be built. Part of what we want to do, obviously, we... So when we plan projects, we don't plan projects and sit on them waiting for somebody else to pay for them, like another funding body. So we will advance that as soon as we have the allocation. But we will also, recently, there was an announcement from the federal government that there's going to be some infrastructure money available, COVID infrastructure money. And it talked about multipurpose trails or active transportation routes. So we will, I've already reached out to see if we can attract some funding there. They don't have the forms made up yet, but we're on that. And if we can attract anybody else's money to help, that's great. Otherwise, we'll push ahead. So I would expect the Parade to Stars section to be scheduled for next year.
Thank you. One more thing. When we access that money, we should also access it for the Industry Avenue piece that we're putting in. That's COVID and its infrastructure.
Yeah, if that's deemed eligible, for sure. Now, that one may be difficult where we've already awarded it. And in fact, it'll be completed in the next few weeks. I don't know that we'll be able to attract money there. I've asked as recently as this week through the province. The province reached out through EMO Nova Scotia about water needs and water support. They're looking at temporary ad hoc solutions, such as allowing people to go into schools to get water or other public buildings. And I reached out to say, hey, you know, we're looking at putting in a 24/7, 365 public water supply to meet people's needs, whether it's individual or regional. Is there any support for sustainable specific services? And there was nothing available.
Because my answer from the province was that the next batch of money is coming through from the federal government. So they're, anyway, we'll keep an eye on it.
We'll throw anything we can at the money if we have projects that fit.
Yeah, perfect. Okay, so, all right, so on the Haley Road multi-use trail, approve that one for Aberdeen Paving.
Question.
No, somebody didn't second it. Lindsay?
Okay. Seconding, yeah.
I think Jim made the motion, Steve will second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Water tanks coating inspection, this one blew me away.
Yep. Yeah, this is a good news story. So, Your Worship, the tender was posted on the Nova Scotia Procurement Site, July 8. Tender closed July 23. Five compliant bids were received. Scope consists of supply and install of exterior coating system for podable water storage tank. And I believe this is the Brenton tank. Cliff may know differently? Or...
No, no.
Okay.
I was going to make sure that was identified, yeah.
Okay, so you have a recommendation from the project engineer for Kelson &amp; Kelson Limited, in the amount of $63,785 plus HST. We were a little concerned about the range of bids. And so we had our consultants go back and confirm, first of all, that they made no errors in their bid, and they confirmed that that was their number. We checked on their reputation, and they are an outfit out of St. John, New Brunswick. They have some, what I'm to understand is that they have some technology in terms of how they apply the paint, and it's less labor-intensive. And they may have other larger work in the area. And so this is a situation where we perhaps are benefiting from them already being mobilized in our area, and it's to our taxpayers' benefit.
Jeff?
Jeff?
I can ask a question, maybe to Jeff or maybe to the Chair of the Water Utility. Does the water tank, is that owned by, I know it's owned by the county Yarmouth, but does that go through the Water Utility at all? Or does that, that will go through the Water Utility?
Part of the Water Utility. So Jeff, my question was, what was the budgeted amount that, or the estimated budget amount that we had in place before we tendered?
Yeah, I don't have that in front of me. I apologize for that.
All right, so I assume it's well within the budgeted amount, or estimated amount that we had, is it?
I would guess that it is, and I apologize again. Usually, I ask for those numbers to be put in the memo, so, because that question always comes up. I'm going to say it's well within the budget, because typically, if these things come in over budget, it leads to a conversation with me, is couldn't we go forward with this? And how do we explain to council where the money will come from? I have talked to Mark about just that issue, and that is putting the budget number in these documents and these memos. And he has an opinion that it's not necessarily a practice that he recommends. Reason for that is putting out to the contractor that you had maybe more money in the budget to do this than they bid. Might not be the kind of message you want to send.
I hear that, so frankly, it's contractual. I think it could be a question that would be put in a in-camera meeting and answered there, I think.
Yeah.
In the future, maybe.
Okay. Now, the other thing I'll point out... Sorry, if I could say, I think it would be appropriate, maybe, if the Chair of the Water Utility makes the motion, because frankly, this is a water utility item, and I didn't catch that before it got on this agenda, so...
So I offer a motion to approve the low tender of $63,785 plus HST, Your Worship.
Do I get a second there?
Second.
Okay. So Counselor Cliff and Counselor Jim, any more discussion?
Question.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Tender results, tender results, REN intermunicipal agreement. Okay, so we're looking for approval of this one.
Yep, Your Worship, the, I'm not aware that there's significant changes in this agreement. I know they updated a little bit of the language and maybe the numbers, but I think it looks very much like the agreement we've had in place since the REN began. It did have an expiry date, so this is a renewal.
Yep, good stuff.
So moved.
Okay, moved by Counselor Don, second by Deputy Mayor. Okay, movement councillor Don, second by deputy mayor. Any more discussion?
Question.
All those in favor?
Worship. Hold on.
Oh, yeah. Sorry, go ahead.
Your worship, before we rubber stamp this, I would offer this comment. Recently, the REN advertised for a communications person. They've done it twice actually since maybe January. And it's a new hire. I believe the staff down there consists of about six people. I believe that two directors are no longer with the REN. And when this came up a couple of years ago within the REN, I don't, I think those directors opposed within the REN, the appointment of a new director. And so what I'm saying is, why do we rubber stamp the funding? When they're spending that kind of money on a six-person thing for a communications person? I ask that question because frankly, I think it's over the top in terms of an expenditure for a small organization like that. That's my comment. I'll be voting aye.
Right. Anyone else? Go ahead, CAO.
Your worship, part of, part of the, the structure of the REN is we do have the liaison oversight committee. And you know, we have had situations, now this is not the first time that we've had a member of, of one of the councils who've had a question or, or an issue that they've wanted to, to bring to the REN. But the REN is, the REN board itself is all, all people from the private sector and the liaison oversight committee is, is from the, from the government sector. And I guess the point is, is that when we have concerns like that, it is appropriate to give them a voice and to bring them forward to that committee and to bring back, bring back answers. And so the question about the communications position, the number of staff and so on, and maybe even a, an annual update from the REN wouldn't be, wouldn't be out of place.
Okay, who's our liaison now?
Who is? I believe that person's in your office.
Yeah, he's waving. He's just, yeah, okay. All right.
So your worship, one, if I may, before I decide whether I'm going to change my vote or not, one person asked me this. What does the REN stand for? And I said, well, I really don't know. And the person said, well, Ren, are they going to get something done?
Oh, my gosh.
Maybe that's what it's doing.
Okay, so we have a, we have a problem. Just hang on a second. We have a, we have an issue in that elected officials are not understanding what the REN's there for. And, and I've heard, and I'm not talking about you councillor, councillor Cliff, but, but other, others have said they need to go out and bring businesses to us. That's not what they do. That's, that's not the job of the REN. The job of the REN is, I mean, we should, I think we each need to, we need to be looking on their website, understanding, understanding what they do. So providing business growth tools.
Best practices.
Opportunities, like they're, they're just, they're growing bis, they're growing the businesses we have. So I, so I've, I've heard folks say before, they need to go out and get a new business. Instead of going out to get in the new business that has maybe five employees, what they're doing is teaching our current businesses to, to grow within themselves. So we end up with more employees across the board. The other tools, the other, I mean, it's, it's so expansive what they provide, but the other piece is, is teaching them to, to run leaner companies. So they're dishing out less money, but still making sure that the, that the employment pieces there. Gosh, I don't even, like I, I don't even know where to start. Like there's just.
Your worship, one of the things that, that they have done for us quite effectively is, is assist as a, as a buffer frankly, between the municipal units and businesses or site selectors looking to locate business within the region. They have become sort of the filter. And so what they do is they do a professional job at dealing with site selectors, giving the criteria of what they're looking for to our economic development officers. So Natalie, in our case, Natalie scrambles, pulls together the, a package from the town of Yarmouth on the infrastructure services support that's available here. And, and the REN take, gathers those from all of the municipalities that have something to offer that meet the criteria and then presents them to the site selector. And so what we're not doing, it's, it's kind of funny, but, or it's kind of good actually, but we're, we're competing, but we're doing so properly. We're not, we're not getting into each other in a negative way when there's, when there's an opportunity for the region. If a business comes to the region, no matter where it lands, it's good news for the region. And what we're trying to do and what they're doing successfully is coordinating that. So it doesn't become municipalities fighting with one another, but us all putting our best foot forward and business makes a business decision. So it's kind of taken that, that intermunicipal fight out of the equation and, and.
Which is huge. It's huge because businesses are, we're turning around and saying that we're not going to listen to who's going to fight over where we should be. They don't see municipal lines. The, the other thing they do is, is a lot of business succession planning with businesses, especially businesses that had, a lot of them that hadn't done it before, like the fish plants. And I can tell you that if I, if a company needs an employee, the REN's the first place I would, I mean, I hear that every single day that the REN is finding the employees for companies. Brenda's friggin amazing. So they, they just do a whole lot of things. But I think the understanding of what they do and what they don't do is just not there. So we can certainly get them to come in. And, and present that and ask our questions if we want to do that. Still need to get this one passed though, I think.
So.
Go ahead, Cliff.
So I, I just want to follow up on what you said, your worship. So I want to try to be serious for a moment. My concern is this, is that, and I'll stand to be corrected if I'm wrong, that basically the REN, when a business does express an interest in the region, that basically REN ends up sending the request for decision about the business creation, or if it's a new one, that kind of thing off to Halifax and the decisions are being made in Halifax about the who, how, and the where, based on the information provided by the REN. And I think when you lose that local context, you don't have the same impact. I'll give you a classic example. All the struggles we've had to try and develop, redevelop the high school. The old RDA would have fixed that, I think, or might well have done. It's not happening and I don't see, well personally, I think that these development agencies should be working on things like that and helping us dispose of a high school that was pushed on us, forced on us by the provincial government. I don't think that's going to happen by a decision maker in Halifax.
Okay.
And I'll be, I'll be critical until I see the contrary, but I, I just, I don't see, I don't visually see what they're doing. And so maybe a presentation would help.
So they, they need to come in because they're, they're doing a heck of a pile of good work. The decisions aren't made in Halifax. It's, it's just the opposite. It's just the opposite. The information goes to the companies from a local group.
So your worship, if, if a company is looking to locate in Nova Scotia generally, and they contact the provincial government, they get, they get directed to NSBI and NSBI will reach out to the RENs with the criteria and the RENs reach out to the municipalities. And if we have anything to offer, we do. In those cases, you know, we present to, we give to the REN, the REN gives to NSBI and NSBI presents the options to the develop, to the prospective business. But in a situation where a business has decided they want to locate in Western Nova Scotia, in the REN region, NSBI is no longer the conduit between the business and, and the region, the REN is. And so a, a step is eliminated. They've already eliminated the rest of the province and they want to be in southwestern Nova Scotia. Then it's simply the REN reaching out to us through our, our economic development officers, collecting what the best information we have to, to attract the business and have them establish jobs in our community. And they present that to the business and work with our economic development officers to try and make it happen. So.
The good thing is for me, the good, part of the good thing, the great thing is, is the board of directors. And I've often referred to them, even though they change, as the dream team. You, you've got the Dave Aaronbergs and Dave Saxtons and Alistair Sorette and, and they understand business, they understand community, they understand growth. So let's questions together so we make sure that everybody understands what they do, important work. So we got a motion on the floor around the intermunicipal agreement. Who made the motion? You seconded it? Did Don make it? Okay, Lindsay's saying yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so Phil's calling for the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Contrary? Okay, motion carried. So do we want to have a motion to invite them?
I'll make the motion. REN at their next available opportunity.
Okay, Cliff, you want to second that?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried. Request for decision airport agreement envisioned. So we were all, I am most, the council was at the meeting that we had.
I wasn't. And I'm not sure what this is. I, I, to be honest with you, I, I was asked to be kept in the loop, but wasn't. And so I, I'm not going to vote one way or the other for this because I have no idea.
So the three councils met last week to talk about the airport, to talk about the vision going forward. And frankly, there were, there really are three options. They are status quo or try to grow. They are make it smaller or right-size it to our circumstances and our, our realities or close it. And the consensus through a morning-long sort of heart, heart, what do you call it? Soul searching and a discussion about what we know and what we don't know about the impact of various, of the various strategies. The general consensus at the meeting was, is that we need to right-size this and we need to right-size it now. We need to give the board clear direction on that so that they can execute. It's the board's job to execute, but frankly, we haven't been necessarily clear on what we want them to do and that they can't do anything if they don't have the funding and an intermunicipal agreement renewed to do that. So the consensus in the room was right-size the airport, which means fit it to, to our circumstances and our means. And to extend or confirm our funding through March 31st, 2021. And that leading up to that day, there will be a reporting back to the owners on the progress that's been made and the expectations are clear that progress needs to be made. And John Cunningham is the Chair of the Airport Corporation now, and he was very clear that this is what they need, is, is a clear mandate from the owners. And they also need to, to bring in somebody to do the work that needs to be done. And that with the funding that is, that we'll provide to them will be very possible. And the CAOs have, have agreed and met and talked about this ahead of that meeting. And obviously since that meeting, we're, we're happy that the councils at least left there with, with the consensus. That we'll lean in and, and support this work getting done because what we want is, like you want, is, is success on achieving a vision. So a motion to extend the current airport agreement to March 31st, 2021. And provide notice to the board that funding is confirmed. And also the council confirmed the suggested mandate to the airport board to right-size operations that align with our current economic environment.
Your worship, I'll make the motion that we accept and adopt the recommendation of staff in regards to this matter.
Okay. Second by councillor Jim.
I have a question.
I also have a question. So in support of, in support of that, let me say a few things because I am your, I am your council representative on the board now. And before that, I was a council representative as a
Non-voting.
As an, what do you call it?
Alternate.
Non-voting member with speaking privileges. For many years now, we have struggled with how the public and ourselves view the airport. For many years, we struggled to make ourselves an international airport and have passenger services and that kind of thing. For a long time, I've taken my aviation expertise, which is nil today, but I used to have some background in the business. I, I worked on the land side at Halifax International as a surveyor and engineering technician. I was a pilot out there. And so the airport is doing a light number of things, has been doing a number of things, life lots, Coast Guard, RCF. It's been doing general aviation. If you happen to be going by the airport in the last week or two, there's been a twin engineer. There's been a twin engineer there. I got a there's been a twin-engine aircraft operating out there. I think it's doing survey work. I'm not sure. And hang on. I can't make it go off, folks. I'm sorry.
Yeah, she can.
So this is a place that we've wanted to be for a long time, some of us, and we should be. This would keep all three municipal units in. The vision would be to right-size the operation out there, which would involve a number of cost-saving measures, significant cost-saving measures, but still be able to provide the same level of services that we had been providing, achievable goal. It's been something that I've advocated for a long period of time. So I'm strongly supporting this resolution. Frankly, I was giving up hope that there would ever be a tri-municipal agreement that would make sense on this subject. We've been diverted on a number of occasions down various different paths by different levels of government. And it's time for us to seize the initiative and recognize that we can operate some import Hawksbury or Digby, similar what's you'll note that just recently, the, you'll note that just recently, Air Canada and WestJet have canceled, I think, 20 some odd different flights to different towns and cities within the Maritimes. And COVID is certainly, if there wasn't a reason to right-size the airport before COVID, there certainly is one now. I do not think that scheduled passenger service is a reasonable option in the near future. And if there ever is an option, it will be based on a market-based approach. Somebody will figure they can make money here and will have the facility that they can do it with. Meantime, we have to reduce the amount of obligations we have as an operator, the transport cannon and that kingdom. Those words. Let's give you the.
Hey, Jim?
Where do we stand with the other two units, Jeff and/or Pam? Have the other two units passed as we are about to pass the motion today as resolved with the meeting of the day?
I know Modi has.
Your worship, I haven't heard anything from Argyle on this, but I, I certainly got the impression that they were supportive at the, at the meeting.
I got the same.
I got the same. Danny spoke to that in the room because he had a majority of his council in the room. And he was reassured by the fact that each of those who were in the room were supportive of this particular motion. Thank you.
Cliff, if you turn your other computer off that you're not using, you won't lock up as much. Just up to you.
I'm just done with this. I just I got the agenda here and I'm calling on one computer and I got you here now.
Okay. So we good? There's a mover and a seconder?
Question.
Question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Request for decision 221, Forrest.
So your worship, this is a danger slightly matter. And the situation has been going on for a while and we've talked about it at council before. An order is being considered by the administrator to issue an order that may result in demolition of the property. He advised the, so when you do that, council has to approve the order. And he, and the property owner needs to be advised at least seven days ahead of the matter coming to council, which was the case. The property owner is aware the council's considering tonight endorsing an order to either have it fixed or tear it down. The property owner has been in discussion with the building inspector about what needs to be done. He has arranged for a contractor to come and look after the roof, which is one of the, one of the big issues with the property. Taking the property owner at his word, and I have to say, the property owner has been very engaged. What I understand, part of the issue with the property is that it, there's an issue with the state. And sometimes those things don't get resolved quickly and result in people not having the level of control or the ability to confidently spend their money and not have it at risk. So anyway, he's arranged for a contractor to be there in September to repair the roof. So what I would recommend, your worship, is that council endorse an order to fix the issues or potentially have the property torn down. But to set a deadline of September 30th. So that gives the property owner the opportunity to be good, as good as his word, to get the work done that needs to be done.
Okay.
What happens on October the first, Jeff?
If October, if October the first?
What I understand, several times.
Sorry, your worship, I spoke over the deputy mayor. If he could repeat that?
Yeah, he's wondering what happens October the first because he said this has happened several times where time has been given, but no work has been done.
Yeah, well, there's been no order, there's been no order to demolish.
Given, Jeff, but there have been assurances that work would be done that wasn't carried out. So I don't know if there was actual paperwork to carry it out, but there was discussions between ourselves and the individual that owns a home. That's all.
Yep. So if this order is made, then the option of demolishing the property, October 1st is available to us.
So my other question is, or my oldest question, what, what has to be done to be secure? What, what has to be done to make it secure?
I wasn't aware that anything needed to be done to make it secure. I wasn't aware that it was not secure, but if it is not secure, I can bring that up with Glenn.
Are we tearing this down because of what it looks like on the outside?
On the inside again.
So here's another question. Do we, do we put in order to take this down because of what it looks like on the outside?
Well, the, the property is, has not been fixed up. It's been a couple of years. As the deputy mayor indicated, we haven't seen the level of response that we've been looking for. The roof clearly has issues. I believe there was a tarp attached to the roof to try to prevent water infiltration. That never works. So the inside, no doubt, has been impacted by the fact that the roof has been leaking. And it doesn't look especially good. So if the owner has no intention of fixing up the property, then it may as well come down in an orderly fashion because a building with a roof that leaks over the long term is not going to be a building anybody's going to be interested in salvaging. So what would happen is if we take this down, if the owner doesn't do something to, to fix that roof, then we take down the building and the costs are applied against the property as a lien, which probably means the property goes up for tax sale, you know, in a couple of years at the latest.
Okay.
Jeff, with the pictures that we have that were presented in the package, it looks like the stamp timeline or date is two years ago. So I don't think the situation has gotten any better over the last two years.
No doubt.
Okay. I just need to know about the inside because I'm people around here can't even find housing. So we're going to tear something down if the inside's okay, but apparently that's not the case. So all right, I'm good.
Glenn has, Glenn has told me that that's his belief, the inside has been impacted by the leaky roof, and there's going to be a lot of work to do. You know, if, if this fellow comes and fixes up the outside, I mean, the issue, as I understand it, is not the dangerous part, but more the unsightly part. But it will quickly become dangerous if the roof is, is in such bad shape that the structural integrity becomes compromised.
Okay.
I'll make the motion that we accept the recommendation from the CAO to the building inspector, I guess, your worship.
All right, the deputy mayor just made a motion to accept the CAO's recommendation.
Second.
Second by Councilor Steve. Any more discussion?
Question.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
So your worship, to be clear, if, if work has not been undertaken by a contractor on that property, October 1st, I'll be directing the building inspector to get votes for the demolition for that building.
Right.
If it's within my spending authority, I will approve the low bid. If it needs to come to council, it will come to council.
Okay. Do we vote? Yes. Okay. Follow-up presentation from CMHC Re-National Housing Strategy. So Lindsay asked me about this. I have no problem with them coming back, but Lindsay, I would love it if we could have a focus on those things that we can do or, or yeah.
And the other thing, your worship, is Councilor Hood made a couple of points or a couple of pointed questions today about, about housing that's available in the tiny yard that could be refurbished, talking about the old school and what we can do to push forward some of these projects that aren't new-built and look outside the box, either be schools or renovations of other buildings, I guess.
Yeah. So, so Lindsay, when you invite her, maybe mention those are the types of things. We don't need a I, I'm just speaking for myself. I don't think we need a great big overview of what the project is. We need something that's going to help us move forward with some things that we have here, like pointed discussions on empty schools and other, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have no problem then. So someone want to make a motion to invite them or not, or?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
And seconded that. Go ahead, wait.
Sorry, Jim. I'd just like to say it's been increasingly frustrating when it comes to housing in this area. We all know that there are need, that there are issues that need to be addressed. And yes, we do need to talk to whomever will help us. Because it just seems like a lot of lip service being paid to things that aren't necessarily getting done. And I know a lot of what's going on doesn't even fit in our realm, but as people who care about the, the community, because we are the community, this needs to be addressed. And if it's not us, who's going to do it? So it's time to get moving on this.
It is. We got a couple of issues because it's, yeah. We've got a, we've got a housing department issue. We've got landlords that are doing their thing issue. We've got quality. We've got a lot of issues with housing. And okay, so motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Feeding wild animals bylaw.
Your worship, this came up quite a while ago and it, it kind of fell off the radar because we, I'm going to say because I'm assuming because we, we then got into having a presentation from Natural Resources around what to do about deer population. You'll remember that presentation and, and you know, I, I came away from that with the most impactful things we can do is try to count deer. And if they determine that that, that warrants some sort of special action, then they may be willing to take it. And that revolves around a hunt or a call. But that doesn't stop us from, from implementing a bylaw that would, that would make it illegal to feed wild animals within the town. And actually, Councilor Steve brought, put this back on my radar with a question. And we looked up and sure enough, we had it ready. We just hadn't brought it forward. So for your consideration, your worship, for first reading, we're proposing this wild animal, feeding wild animals bylaw. And I, I believe Lindsay can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we, we have copied this perhaps from Truro.
I believe it was New Glasgow, but yeah.
New Glasgow, thank you.
All right, can I speak?
Yes, go ahead.
This is, how do I put it? That it makes sense to me. If I can make an analogy, it's kind of like getting frustrated with your computer and kicking it apart. Doesn't help much, but it makes you feel better. And you know what? I will support this bylaw. But I got to be honest with you, it's completely unenforceable. It's more a gesture than anything else. And I do agree it needs to be done. But there you are. Okay, that's it.
Worship.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so that's, I expect that to Councilor Steve directly, some of my concerns about it. But it's not unlike, it's not unlike our, our dog feces bylaw, right? Where we require people to clean up after their animal. And a lot of people do. Right? A lot of people know that's the law. They, they carry a bag with them. They are responsible pet owners. But then you'll see from time to time evidence that somebody is the dog owner or a responsible pet owner. The evidence is, is wide walk. It doesn't mean that it isn't having some effect. There are lots of people who are complying and maybe just needed that, that rule that they can follow to understand what the standard is and comply with it. There may be people who are putting carrots in their driveway or in their backyard today who don't realize that it's actually something that they should not be doing. And by passing this bylaw, although it may be impossible to, to prove a case, to have a fine stick, or very difficult, I'll say never impossible, difficult to enforce, I think it does send a clear message about what council's intention is. And the vast majority of our citizens are law-abiding citizens and will respect the fact that the councils had to take a position here. An example would be our backyard burning bylaw, right? Not everybody loves that one. We have, we've been approached several times by people wishing to have a backyard open fire. And council has, has upheld that bylaw in the past. And you know what? Thank you to the law-abiding citizens of the town who respected and resist the temptation, purchased other devices to create ambiance in the backyards, but for the opportunity to have a backyard fire. So I think it is important, even if it's difficult to enforce, to send a message to the community that this is something that, that is not permitted within the town for the benefit of all.
I hope the Canadian Constitution Foundation doesn't find out about this. Could be trouble.
Oh, let's not go there. Oh, dear God.
We're going to go there later. So I have a question. Go ahead, Jim.
I just have one comment. At, on my walk about the town and different areas of the town, there's a certain home in the north end of town in which the occupier of that home is, you can see him feeding deer on our lunch hour walk. He's actually has his hand out and he's, and the deer are taking food out of his hand. And, and I've also seen a couple of people with fires in their yard nearer home than, than Prospect Street. So anyway, I'm going to support because I know what you said, Jeff. I echo what you said. I think most people are careful and obey the rules. Thank you.
Jim, wasn't it also a recommendation from the last Communities in Bloom committee meeting to send to council something along the same lines as what's being recommended here?
Trying to remember. And I'm
I think it was.
Yeah, not on that committee, so I'm just, but I should look on the outside.
Counselor, so.
So, so here's a question. Somebody's, somebody's feeding deer in their backyard and a neighbor takes a photo.
So my experience, and I would certainly defer to our solicitor, but I believe we would need a statement from the from the neighbor. That, you know, a statement from them is going to carry more weight in terms of supporting a ticket than a photograph.
Yeah, it's Greg. You know, certainly we need to take a statement from someone and also they'd have to be willing to come to court. If you're not willing to come to court, then it's very difficult to prosecute. But yeah, if they gave a statement to the bylaw enforcement officer, that would be the basis for a ticket. And then if the ticket is contested, we could subpoena that person to court.
Okay. We just, I mean, I, if I'm going to vote yes, which I am, I just need to know we can do something about it because this, we're, we're taking up all the land that the deer live on. We, how big is the town? Like one by two kilometers? It's a little, it's a pittance.
Three miles long, one mile wide.
Seriously? But we're like a friggin' smorgasbord for wild animals because everybody's feeding them.
So your worship, one of, one of the issues with, I mean, there are many, there are several issues that come with having deer in a urban area, right? There's ticks, there's, there's motor vehicle collisions, there's destruction of landscape. One of the things that, that someone suggested was that maybe to have some more signs around the community of the kind that shows the deer springing out of the, of the woods, just as a reminder to people that just because you're in a, in a somewhat urban area, that you should still expect to see deer and maybe without much warning. Maybe we let our guard down a little bit when we're in town. I know when I travel the country roads, particularly at night, I'm constantly scanning for, for deer particularly because there are so many around. And maybe just that as well as a reminder to people that you should expect to encounter deer from time to time within the town.
If I could, Pam?
What's that? Go ahead, Steve.
I, I had a community member, well, a few actually, just contact me. But actually, they live up north, north end and they're, I believe, eight or nine-year-old was walking home and actually had a deer chase the little girl into the house. So this is what started me to ask Jeff about this. So I think just in safety and whatnot, it's a good first step, but I So I, I think just in safety and, and whatnot, it's a good first step, but I think we should remember it's a first step. I think there's other things we kind of got to move forward with it, but I think there's shows and if we can keep moving forward. I mean, I live on Baker Street and I can look over in my backyard at Beacon Park at night and you would think the deer were in the playground on the swings. There's six or seven there, right in the middle of town every night. So a good first step, but I think there's more things we need to do moving forward if we can.
I agree. Go ahead, Cliff.
So speaking to the enforcement part, and there was a discussion earlier in, in relation to this about fines and tickets and proving things in court. You know, there are other ways to dampen down people's violations of the law or perceive. You take that picture, for instance, from the neighbor and the person doesn't want to go to court. But I'll tell you what, your bylaw enforcement officer armed with that picture, you go out and have a conversation with the person that's feeding the deer and simply say, look, this is a picture of you doing this, it's against, it's against our bylaws. If we get another repeat of this, frankly, you're likely to be prosecuted and the fine will be. Sometimes that's all it takes to modify people's behaviors. And, uh, so passing the bylaw gives you the tool to at least do those kinds of things.
Yep, good point. So we good?
Good.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Contrary. Motion carried, uh, council advisory committees, committee of the whole, deputy.
Yep, thank you, your worship. Uh, I moved the council adopted mural grant program guideline and funding application to be administered by the Yarmouth Society as recommended by the economic development officer.
Second, third, fourth. We got it.
Second, third and fourth by councillor Wade. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary, motion carried. I just hope we get some really cool art. We don't need a whole bunch of, anyway, go ahead. We'll sort that.
There'll be all kinds of stuff, it'll be good. Your worship, I move the council adopted policy effective November the first, 2020. Do we ever pass this whereby the council is provided with business laptop computers equipped with hardware and software necessary for councillors to participate in virtual hybrid and in-person meetings as recommended by the C A O.
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion?
My question.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Contrary. Motion carried.
Uh, your worship, a move that Mayor Pam move is, is resigning from the doctor recruitment committee and councillor Jim McLeod be appointed in her place.
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion?
Question.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Have they had, have they had any, uh, meetings lately or any?
There's one coming up.
One coming up, okay.
There's one coming up.
Okay, thank you.
Motion's carried. Lindsay, would you, um, reach out to the, whoever does that and make, take me off, make sure Jim's on? I don't need to see them anymore.
Can you do that as a matter of course?
What's that?
When a, when a committee change occurs like that, we do, that's just a matter of standard, uh, cleared it up, like notified.
We're going.
Your worship, I move that council defer the matter of changing to have the ten day meetings record mover and secondary to the next committee of the whole meeting. That way Wade doesn't get the second, third, and fourth one. You only get it once, Wade.
Okay, we must second to that.
Wade doesn't want to put his hand up now, Wade seconds that, don't worry.
Nope, definitely not.
Seconded it. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Contrary, motion carried.
Uh, your worship, I move the council refer crosswalk at Hibernia Street and Brunson Street to the traffic authority.
Second.
Second by councillor Wade. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary. Motion carried.
Your worship, thank you.
Thank you, deputy, council advisory, planning advisory. Was there anything for you councillor Jim?
No.
Okay. Uh, pension committee. There's a letter there from Eckler.
Your worship, I'll speak to that. So the, um, the pension committee met, uh, earlier this week, uh, with our pension consultants. The, the work continues to, uh, prepare to transfer our pension plan to the public sector superannuation plan, the provincial pension plan. Uh, we are, we are in the queue, uh, and still slated for, uh, be late this year, early next year. Uh, Eckler has recommended to us that we, that we change our investment mix to better match the P S S P. The reason for that is that if, uh, it's, it's kind of a risk management move. So the cost of transferring will be affected by, uh, whether, if, if, for instance, the P S S P were to, uh, make more gains than the town, then the cost will go up for us to make the transfer and vice versa. If we, if we, uh, if we incurred more losses, um, then our cost would go up. So in order to protect our position, which right now is not horrible, uh, markets came back nicely, uh, after, after March. And Eckler suggesting that we, we make the adjustments as outlined in the memo from Derek Gerard, uh, to, uh, basically, uh, amend our investment strategy for the time being until a decision is taken, whether we're going in or, or not. If we don't go in, this would be nullified and we go back to our, uh, standard, uh, I'd say investment strategy. Uh, and if it goes forward and we do make the transfer, then all of this becomes moot because we are then in their, in their plan and our assets are invested with theirs.
Would be a motion?
I'll make the appropriate motion, Jeff and Pam.
I don't understand what the motion is.
So the, so your worship.
Go ahead.
So the P S S P is invested, um, up to 30% in equities. And the town of Yarmouth, uh, is invested up to 55% in equities, meaning the, the stock market. And we use investment consultants as, and the P S S P has, has investment consultants. If the markets and our investments don't track along and do as well as the P S S P, the cost of doing a transfer later this year could increase. And what Eckler is suggesting is that our investments have done quite good over the, over the last couple of months as a rebound from the initial COVID dip. And they're suggesting that we now match at 30% equities and 70% in, uh, fixed income and cash. So less risky investments to match what the P S S P is so that our cost of the transfer when it comes time doesn't surprise us. That we don't end up with, with something that, uh, uh, as a result of the markets, makes it unfeasible.
Pam, that's on page two of the, of the report.
Yeah, okay. So who made the motion? Jim? Who's seconding that?
I'll second it.
Deputy seconded it, any further discussion on that, folks? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, uh, reports for information. Not sure if there was anything. Police advisory board was there. I can tell you from the police advisory board, we're just sending a letter to, uh, to the province around the ATVs because for some reason they just can't seem to say yes to a simple request.
Your worship, your, your worship, that, that concerns me. And, uh, why are we not getting a response? Because for maybe four years for sure, I've been wanting to extend and be allowed to, uh, you drive an ATV on Water Street to connect up to the two entry exits on our, and why is it difficult?
Because, because there's a pilot project. We asked to be on it. We didn't make the cut. Actually, we made it at first and then they took us off it. And they want to finish the pilot project, which runs for two years. So we've already finished a year. Uh, so by next spring, we should be good to go. But in the meantime, my, my argument with them is we don't have a ferry and we have hundreds of ATV'ers that would love to, to just access the downtown, the restaurants, the, the hotels, the shops. It's, it's simple, but they, it's, we're not allowed to have anything across Water Street because it's, it's, uh, illegal right now.
So Water Street, we pay for the upkeep of Water Street.
Yeah, we, we actually.
So, so the province doesn't pay for it, right?
They don't, they don't pay to plant it, to build it, to pave it, to salt it, to plow it. They don't pay to police it. They just tell us we can't have ATVs on it.
Did you tell them that, what you just said?
Yes, word for word. Cliff?
So your worship, as you know, I'm on the police advisory committee and, uh, this matter was discussed at length at the police advisory committee, uh, 10 days, two weeks ago. Uh, the, the committee, uh, wholeheartedly endorsed a motion to have the chair of the, David Saxon is the chair of the committee, address the correspondence. I assume that's the correspondence that you're referring to.
It is.
And let me fill in and say that everyone on the committee, including the chief of police, as I will call him, is on side to allow ATVs. We had a, on Water Street, we had a discussion about possibly, A, not enforcing the strict application of the motor vehicle act. We had a discussion about reducing the speed limit to permit this to happen, all of which I think is in the power of the town. And to Jim's point, I went and looked at the termination point north of, uh, well, it's actually north of Tim Hortons, just north of the, the termination point is the fence for the, uh, West Nova Service Station. In other words, the trail comes down along the side of the R C M P, uh, parking lot, right to the fence, stops. However, there is a fairly large lot of land with grass on it between West, uh, West Nova Fuels and the paved parking lot of the R C M P station, which would make an excellent parking and demarcation spot from my look and provide an opportunity. I don't know owns it, I think we do, but I don't know, or the industrial commissioner, somebody. And you could easily, uh, create, uh, an exit from the path to the street along that land. The rest of it then is down at the treatment plant and there's very little modification made to, uh, enable these, you have to take the bollards out that prevent the, uh, access by ATVs to the trail. But so, I don't know, we have the authority, Jim, to close off streets like Main Street for the, uh, annual, uh, car show when we're permitted to have it outside of COVID. This is one of those ones where it's, getting, getting approvals for things in Halifax is just awful. And some of these things are, should be within our jurisdiction to do it. And it's frustrating. It's frustrating in a high degree. And I don't know, I, I, I would be in favor of going ahead and just doing it and see how, see how it goes.
But if something happens, we're liable.
They have insurance.
They have insurance.
We have insurance for that.
I understand it, but if somebody, if a pedestrian gets hurt because we've said, go ahead, then that's on us.
Well, I gotta accept that, your worship, you're not wrong. So the other way is to shake enough, shake, shake enough chains in Halifax, make some noise. Uh, we've been awful silent during the four years of this council when it comes to chastising the provincial government. I like a lot of what the provincial government's done and has been doing in our province. Of the most conservative government that I've seen in my lifetime, which fits my mold of how you should govern duty. But there's other things that are bogged down and stuck in silly bureaucracy and, uh, somewhere between staff and ministers, it doesn't happen. And I'm disappointed on this one because it's, it's happening in other places and it should be happening here.
Councilhood made a really, really good point. And I really didn't think about it, is the offloading of the ATVs at the, above the old police station on Prospect Street. And I think that could be a prime piece of real estate for that. Also, I was in, uh, just outside of Wolfville, councillorhood and this active transportation trail that they have there actually has almost like a mini a tool set there that, that prepares bikes and can do some other repairs for other, other equipment on their, on their trail. But we police it, we pay for it. Uh, like worship said, we salt it, plow it. It's, we're only looking at, we've looked at this, Jeff, since 2008. We're only looking from the bulk plant down just, uh, south of the, uh, the old cotton mill complex going down to the, the treatment facility in Yarmouth South. I think there's got to be a way that, uh, we talk to the R C M P, our, our, our C M P that we pay for a hundred percent, not like some of the other people that only pay 70% and say, this is what we're planning to do. Uh, what safety procedures do we need in place? What precautions do we have to have in place? And what signs do we have to have in place? And go ahead and do it.
Your worship.
So you, you. So I may, that, that. Was discussed and the police would be on side. I mean, the idea is that contrary to what we thought otherwise, you don't have to create a separate lane for them. We always thought that the street was too narrow in many spots to do that. The idea would be that the ATVs would travel within the normal flow of traffic. These ATVs, if they're going to properly operate it, have to be registered. They are insured, your worship. Uh, if they're not, they're ticketed, same as a motor vehicle operator would be ticketed or a motorcycle operator would be ticketed on the highway. And so these things are frankly, less of a hazard on the highway if they're properly maintained, insured and registered uh, than a motorcycle. They're on four wheels, most of them are three, which is better than two in some ways. So I agree with what Philip says, we, is time to get something done on it.
One, one final teasing comment. Maybe Cliff, we could contact the Canadian Constitution Foundation and, and she could, uh, help us out here, do you think?
You guys can laugh.
I wrote my own letter to those people yesterday and the letter clearly says.
Hold it.
Writing it on your behalf from the mayor of the town, but it's gone.
Okay, um. Any more reports for information, we're good? Okay, so babies. What?
I think we should make a motion that we're going to, uh, what?
What?
Make a motion that we inform the province that we are going to extend a, uh, altering vehicle, uh, conduit between Prospect Street and the water treatment plant or whatever's on the other side of, of the town line. And, uh, uh, that's it.
It's time for Prospect.
You might add to that.
Yeah, go ahead, Cliff.
You might add to that motion, Philip, um, as recommended by the police advisory committee and as, uh, discussed, um, at, by the committee with the, uh, traffic authority and with the, uh, chief of police, our C M P in town.
Yes, with that, with those additions, your worship. Yes.
So Cliff, you second that motion?
I'll second the motion, uh, Philip, if you agree to add that to it.
Go ahead, Don.
I think we need to put a date on it because, you know, if, if we mess around, it's going to be the whole year again and they've already got completed their pilot. I think we need us, we definitely need to give the province a date that we plan on doing this and make sure that we follow through.
Motion says we're going to do it.
Yeah, as a what, as a what date, Clevy?
Right. We passed a motion today, it says of today.
Perfect, I'm agreeing, okay.
Copy, desire, copy, desire.
Greg, you're listening to us.
Yes, yeah, I am.
I have no problem doing any of it. The problem is not the ATVs. The problem is, we say the ATVs can travel, something happens to a pedestrian. we say the ATVs can travel. Something happens to a pedestrian or somebody else, who's liable? Because we broke the law.
Well, I mean, there's no doubt there's a potential liability issue to the town. I mean, the town has insurance that that deals with that. My understanding, the 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 problem is the Motor Vehicle Act prohibits four-wheelers from being on a public road. So it's not really that the town is allowing something to happen. If anything, I suppose you're instructing the RCMP not to enforce the law to the extent that, you know, that that they would if they got a complaint. But I mean, that's where the issue is going to arise. Somebody's going to call the RCMP complaining. The RCMP is going to say the town told us not to do it. And then I I suppose that's how the issue would arise. But on the specific insurance question, yeah, there's potential liability, but you know, a lot of activities the town undertakes to have liability. That's why you have insurance.
Town's not driving the vehicle. The person driving the vehicle commits the act that's negligent and causes the accident and they're insured.
Because we told them to go on the road. Am I missing something? Am I?
Your worship, I was in the room and the RCMP were not uncomfortable with this.
Your worship, it 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 happens on a regular routine basis today. My office and your.
Permission.
Oh, that's right. That's right.
For me, the difference is we're we're giving them permission. You can't give somebody permission to break the law.
Well, you don't have the authority to give them permission to break the law. That's that's the 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 point, right? It's a provincial law. You can't give people permission to break a provincial law.
Okay.
But Cliff is a hundred percent right. Is these guys have dragged their ass over the last ten years on this thing. They're talking about the Atlantic bubble and increase in tourism within your own province. And I was away along with Counselor Barry this weekend where where we were talking with one of his relatives that went on an all-terrain vehicle trip within this province of Nova Scotia. And if they would have had the opportunity to take advantage of the trails going through in and through Yarmouth, there would have been other people on that trip that would have taken full advantage of already built-in tourism
Yep.
component. And these guys is is it's not like we're giving them permission is we could where is our prerogative or where is our power, Jeff, to lower the speed limit from the old cotton mill building to the to Houston Street? Could you put it at a meter and hour street?
Do we need to?
That's that's the prerogative of Traffic Authority.
Traffic Authority. But these guys are talking about, let's build our own tourism. Let's rebuild this. Let's let's get people traveling within the province. If if you go outside this building here, and I'm sitting in with your worship, you go outside this building, go to the other side of Prospect Street. You know how many people or how many cars? I drove from Bridgewater today. You know how many cars had all-terrain vehicles on the back of them? Or trucks? A lot of them. And and guess what? Our fisher people, most of them have all-terrain vehicles. Our hunter hunters, we have more hunting people, I bet you percentage population than anywhere else in Nova Scotia. And they all have access to all-terrain vehicles and they are seasonal employees that make very good incomes in the fishing community. Have access to time, money and travel. And guess what? I'd like to see somebody from Bridgewater come here, stay overnight at the Grand Hotel, the Best Western, the El Ranch or any other facility, the the Red Cap down in Publico would make a trip through Yarmouth, have a coffee. Nothing I I like nothing better than driving down Water Street and seeing twenty or thirty or forty motorcycles with the benches out there full of people having a coffee. And they are social distancing these days, but I I enjoy that and I like to see it. And they are, they are in the town of Yarmouth. And I think that's what we need. We got to say, listen.
We do.
Listen, Lloyd. Lloyd lives in the biggest rural municipality in the province of Nova Scotia. And he should get this better than anybody, right? You got to sit down and we're going to whack these guys on the head, saying, listen, no is not the answer for this. Come on, boys. Let's get with it. Like Cliff talked about conservative government. I I'm as liberal through and through and through and through. At least Cliff, he's switched it around once or twice. I've never done it, but come on, boys. You guys are talking the talk, but you ain't walking the walk or driving the walk. Let's go.
Okay.
Absolutely.
I mean, now, that was the best rant I've ever heard.
Oh, you wait till we get in camera for CFYV or whatever.
Your worship. I just want I I'm going to, but let's make sure that we write the appropriate letter and maybe let Cliff see it and 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 Greg Barrow see it and just write it and then let's get going on this.
Yeah, I agree. Okay. So motion's been made and seconded. Any more discussion?
Question.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 So so just before we finish, your worship, Philip, what about if we add it right to the end of the motion?
Unless you yeah.
What'd you say?
What'd you say? Say it one more time, Cliff. I missed it.
Well, what I was thinking is that we added in the letter. Oh, yeah. If we added, unless you tell us to the contrary, within seven days of this letter.
Yeah.
Make them make them tell us we can't do it.
Or maybe, yeah, maybe within seven days or we might use an arbitrary date of September the first or I'm good with
I'm good.
I'm good with it.
That's the other way. That that addresses.
We voted, right, Lindsay?
No.
Oh, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary?
Aye.
Motion carried. Thanks, folks. Yes. Correspondence Chuck Porter, Reebok Water Station, he said no.
Shocker. Sorry.
I know, like I
I'm growing increasingly frustrated with with our uppers.
Yeah.
They they wish us the best while they ignore us completely. And I've had enough. And that reflects back to the vote we just had.
Yep. And action for action Keith Colwell's Marine Debris Cleanup Program. I just read that, actually.
Your worship, that's an opportunity for, it looks like the province is preparing to support marine debris cleanup. One of the things in the letter is they suggests that municipal waste and recycling charges can be an impediment to cleanup efforts. Waving these cleanup projects may be one way that you can provide support. We have a waste park that maybe we can forward this to, but one thing I'd be interested in is it it's not clear to me what level of of financial support they're proposing to put behind this this initiative. At the waste park, it can be a significant amount of money to to waive the tipping fees for marine debris because, you know, the the stuff can be very heavy and expensive to for us to dispose of.
Yeah, they're not going to tell us not to charge money for it.
Yeah, and you as Councilor Hood said, I've heard it over the last three years, ten months, it's just another downloading of responsibilities to the municipal units when it comes to this.
Worship, I make a motion that this letter be received and placed on file. Acknowledged, received and placed on file.
I haven't heard that in four years.
Yeah.
I love it. Second by Jim?
Yeah. Question.
Right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary, motion carried. Correspondence to Premier Retail Travel Tax Incentive.
Your worship, this is a letter from YASTA asking the municipal partners to send a letter to the province asking that a travel tax for in-province travel or incentive, I guess, tax incentive for in-province travel be initiated by the province of Nova Scotia, much as it has been in both PEI and New Brunswick.
Your worship, if I may speak on this.
Sure.
I'm the board chair, actually, of YASTA. I just want to point out that all it is is a letter of support. PEI and New Brunswick both have these vouchers. Nova Scotia has said no flat out, but I think it's worth, again, reminding them that for every dollar that is put into to tourism, we get something like three dollars back out. So it's it's certainly economically worthwhile. So basically, again, all we're looking for is is a letter of support. I would make that motion if no one else has anything to discuss. That's it. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Who seconded that? Was that Cliff?
I'll second.
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
Question.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Motion carried. Any questions for committee chairs? We good? No additions. Approval of invoices, please.
So moved.
All right, moved and seconded.
Questions.
Favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Very. Motion carried and date of next meeting?
September tenth.
September tenth.
Your worship.
Yes.
Would we be able to meet in person?
Yeah, maybe it's time.
Long pause. I know there's it's more difficult to socially distance than than in other areas, I suppose, but Bridgewater just met in person.
Yeah, they pushed the issue. Go ahead, Jim.
Your worship, so there's a couple of things we'd have to look into in order to do that. One is how how do we physically distance within our council chambers, given the the fixed nature of our desks? It may be that we could do it and not sit at the desk, everyone. The we are not clear on whether or not the mask directive because the council chambers is a is a public place, whether you would be required to keep your mask on during the entire meeting. And the third thing is, even though we might meet in person, we need to think about whether or not public would be able to attend and and how we would manage that. So if you want us to look into that, certainly willing to. And we can talk about it to me though.
Sure.
Also, also, Jeff, I I'll agree to that. What about recording the meeting, et cetera? That might be more difficult because we're set up now to sit around our desks.
So your worship, I can answer that. So the intention going forward is we will continue to use this platform. While we would be sitting in this in the room together, looking over our computers at each other and and you know, meeting that way, we would still have this system running to record all of our images and and allow us to stream or broadcast the meeting.
Thank you.
All right. So do you need a motion to set that forward to Cal?
Yeah, just a motion, just so it's on the record to ask staff to look to be in person.
Okay. By Don. Second by deputy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Date next meeting in camera. Okay, motion to go in camera, folks.
So moved.
So moved.
Okay.
This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, folks, so we're looking for a motion for the discussion that was held in camera.
All right, well, as everybody all of a sudden got really, really quiet after four hours of discussion, I will, I'll make that motion. And the motion is, is that at this point, as it's getting close to elections and the law, the bylaw would be too it would be too soon when it comes to the the election, we could never repeal it in time anyway, that what we will do, the motion I will make, is that we will not enforce the sign, the election sign law at this point, building up into the election and will reassess after the election. That's my motion.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any more discussion?
Just to be clear, that allows that allows candidates, if they want to use signs, they can.
They can. I my personal, I I you lead by example. I will not be putting signs out, but anybody who wishes to.
Neither will I.
Neither will I. Okay.
Neither will I. On the record.
I will. On the record.
Cal already threw mine away.
Don for the question?
Question.
Questions called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Thanks, folks. So anything else? We're good?
Good.
All right.
Discussion.
Yes, excellent. Thanks, everyone.